Appreciate everyone for coming out tonight. We appreciate all y'all coming to witness government. Happen, I hate to say government in action because it always moves way too slow for my taste, but. Yeah, there you go. So, but anyway, we appreciate everybody coming out tonight, being part of this. We'll do our best to make sure that you can hear us. We're still working on the enhancements to this room. As you can see, we're starting to make some progress. So hopefully before too much longer, you guys will make sure, be able to hear us real well and we'll just leave it at that for now. But at this time, I'd like to ask everyone, please stand for the pledge. Colonel, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And currently, our next up on our agenda is a moment of silence. And obviously, a lot of tragedy going on around the world these days. I would ask that you, if you're so inclined, keep those folks in your thoughts and prayers. And at this time, we'll have a moment of silence. All right. Our first item this evening is our agenda approval. It's time, unless they need to modify the agenda that I'm unaware of, I would entertain a motion to approve our agenda. Motion by Commissioner Wyatt, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Henson, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, our agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Gentlemen, you've had all that prepared and forwarded to you in your packet. For your review includes tax, the typical tax refunds and releases. Tax foreclosure updates, a letter with resolution for Barnard Park. Small, very small grant from Dogwood Trust, the agreement for that. Veterinary services contract for the animal shelter. ARPA grant project ordinance, our forest service contract. School needs dispersment requests, that's money that's already been allocated to the schools or just asking for, for it to be utilized at this time. Resolution authorizing county manager to exempt professional services under a certain dollar amount. Operating assistance application program, transportation authority contract. And grant resolution for transportation authority and our minutes for the last three meetings, which are September 5th, special meeting, September 5th regular meeting, and September 26th special meeting. This time, I would entertain a motion, we approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, having reviewed all that, no question that we have a consent agenda.
All right, that's a motion by Commissioner Hensley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chairman Garrison, any discussion? Hearing none, go to a vote, all in favor? Consent agenda has been approved. Yes, sir, moving right along. Up next is our public comment portion. And this is just general public comment at this time. And I would ask, not sure I can make out his first name, Huntley. Does that sound right? Come on up, ma'am. If you don't mind, come to the podium, please state your name. And if you don't care, let us know what community you represent. Come on up, you gotta come up near the microphone or nobody will be able to hear you online. Take your time, it's okay. It's all right. We need to get an on deck box like they have in baseball, so you're right there.
So, why am I here?
Hold on, go ahead and get to the podium, so everybody can hear you.
Can I speak there?
What's that?
You want to speak there?
Yeah, you can get in the podium there and you can speak and then everything will pick you up and everything will be good. You've got three minutes once you start.
Okay, the reason I'm here, well, just to give you a little bit of information about me, I'm resident of Maricopa. My mother was born in Madison County, one of 12 children. I've lived in Madison and Bunkin County about 20 years. I live on Valley Street and I'm, both my parents are deceased and I have one son, my only child. He's at Chapelville getting a master's degree in renewable resources, business administration. So I live alone. Here's the problem, went into the hospital, all the support. And it took me several weeks to get out, but while I was in the hospital, it came to my attention to my neighbor that my front and back door had been left wide open by the ambulance service, no doubt. And so when I came home, dust, everything, I don't know why there's so much dust where I live. I don't see any dirt roads, but there's plenty of dust on everything. In fact, I've cleaned several, a couple of times, I can say that for sure. And come back and there's, I don't know if it got on the walls or on the ceiling or what. But I don't know if it rained, there's humidity, but anyway, it's a mess. It's just a mess. And coming out of the hospital, moving like a turtle, I haven't been able to jump in and clean it up. All the ambulance service itself, the director there, he said, what do you want me to do? And I said, I'd appreciate if you'd help get somebody to clean it, help them clean it. We'd never do that. So then I went to the owner. He asked me what he could do to make it right. And I said, well, because I had contacted a couple of cleaning people. They didn't really want to bother with it because I live in a small apartment of downsized size. And so, and I didn't really want any housekeeping services after that. I just wanted to have my place to wear. And the unfortunate thing is that I was unable to take advantage of the, when you come out of the hospital, they offer in-home services like therapy. Couldn't even do that because there was so much dust and things. I didn't want anybody there. I don't think they'd have been comfortable there anyway. But the owner said, well, what do you want me to do to make it right? And I said, well, you know, I'll try to continue to contact these cleaners people. Now, see, I'm here for myself personally, but I'm also here. I think this should be known. I've never thought about it for a minute and I've used ambulances before that that would happen. So I would like to let people know that, I don't know how they would put a sign in their door or whatever, because sometimes they may not be conscious when they're taken away in an ambulance so that they can shut the door. You know, so, so that was my main thing was to, was to tell on them. And I haven't even mentioned their name, but it's one that services Madison County. I don't know if it's the only one or not.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, top's up.
Okay.
Well, anyway, I wanted to share that with you so that people, people would know to.
How do you pronounce your last name, ma'am?
It's Wommack.
Wommack?
Wommack.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Well, I hope you do. I hope you do because maybe somebody out there will appreciate.
Thank you very much.
God have your home.
All right, up next is Tony Ponder. Welcome back, Tony. Where you been hiding?
Glad you're feeling well.
Thanks, sir.
Chairman Weckl, Commissioners. I'm Tony Ponder. I represent only myself. On December the 4th, the Board of Elections will open a two-week filing period. That's two months off. Filing is for federal, state, and county offices. One can file by declaring a political party or collecting signatures of 1.5% of county registered voters. That's to file for a county office. Filing date will be extended for those using 1.5%. If you're satisfied with the way things are, don't lift a finger. My opinion, the Democrat and Republican leadership of this county have merged. Select candidates for you. Last election saw exchange of commission. The old entrenched governing order was left in place. Some of us called for an audit of the sheriff's department. Nothing happened. Is there a paid lackey on this board looking out for the sheriff's department interest? Our current county budget is up 34% over last year. I suppose a new reevaluation will provide a windfall of tax increase to cure this budget shortfall. The property taxes are miserably low. A reliable source tells us that some privileged property owners in this county don't pay a dime in property taxes. In the sheriff's budget, there's $80,000 for French Row EMC. There are lavish allocations of money for professional services. How about hiring competent employees so you won't have to use these services? Without hearing environmental impact statements or planning, current commissioners are running a water and sewer line from Maricopa to Marshall. I wonder if they have figured out how many illegals per square mile nonprofits can house. Or maybe they're figuring illegals by the acre. This is economic development, I suppose. Guess which one of you commissioners wants to make this a sanctuary county? Fits right into the deep state globalist agenda, doesn't it? My time is limited. Thanks to this board voting to limit free speech. So if any of you folks out there would like a change in this unit party system, good old boy system, get busy. Take it up, talk it up, and I believe we can do better. Don't we deserve better?
Thank you, Mr. Ponder. All right, that's all we have for general open, our general public comment. There will be another public comment portion of the meeting here in regards to the, the land use ordinance information that's going to be shared, and that's what's coming up next. So, let's see, Brad, I guess you're the presenter tonight for that. Next on the agenda is the presentation of proposed land use ordinance amendments.
Thank you, Chairman Weckl. The planning board has recommended a number of changes for the land use ordinance for the Board of Commissioners to consider. The first one that I'm going to talk about is the road and square footage requirements for vacation rentals. This is a change so that the vacation rental projects that have less than 10 units will not have to comply with the subdivision ordinance road standards. Right now, anything over three has to comply with the road standards that are set out in the subdivision ordinance, which essentially is a 45-foot right-of-way with a 17-foot road bed. And as you can imagine, that's a pretty wide area for a road, for vacation rentals. And it takes a lot of effort to build that type of design. And they're recommending that we eliminate that and for 10 and under. And the other item that they're asking for you all to consider eliminating is the square footage restrictions. Right now, those restrictions are 1,200 square feet for a vacation rental. They would just like you to eliminate those restrictions for 1,200. Any questions about those two recommendations that the planning board is making to the Board of Commissioners?
Brad, I just had one question.
Yes, sir.
There was also a number three there.
This, yes, sir, and that is so that the board can, the Board of Adjustment who will review these, or excuse me, the planning board will review these, will be able to provide some standards for those 10, the projects that have 10 units, 10 vacation rooms. Rather than just eliminating any type of road standards, they can basically say, this is what you have to do in order to have emergency access to your property or allow emergency vehicles to get in and out.
And that would, that latitude, subjected latitude would be for anything under 10?
Yes, sir.
And I guess my question is, is there any intent from the board to have some degree of a standard when applying the appropriate requirements for ingress and egress?
There, currently, there are not any specific standards that they're going to put in place. That would be the discretion of the board when a specific project came up.
And that would just be based on the geographics?
Correct, or what the fire official that would be reviewing those things for emergency access, what they, what they came back with for the board.
I just want, I want to make sure that we don't do away with one requirement and in essence, create an open slate to have not only the requirement there again, but also maybe even a more stringent requirement.
Understood.
Forty-five foot rightways, you know, there's other things that concern me about some of our minor subdivisions and the vacation rentals when it regards to the exorbitant amount of cost and even the feasibility when it comes to 45-foot right-of-way in this mountainous region. And even things such as requiring things like a topographical topo by surveyor, you know, those things are very costly. Hopefully, in maybe in the months ahead, those boards can reassess some of those areas and potentially remove some of the overburdened some requirements. I'm in favor of these square footers. We've had this discussion in the fire board and understood in retrospect that there are requirements in place already. Should it be a large structure that pretty much limits even the ability of those and those are code enforcement, a house of a certain size that has a certain number of occupants would be required to have fire suppression systems, sprint systems. And so there's a lot of things that are in place already.
And water and sewer restrictions would be also.
So there's some things in place already. So I think Chairman Webber and I haven't talked about it lately. We were on the previous board and had this discussion. So all of those concerns have been alleviated for me personally. Glad to see our board taking some proactive steps to look at some of these ordinances and try to tailor to, to fit our community.
You do have a, just so you'll know, you have a copy of the consistency statement. It's also required there on your desk. Just goes along with saying that it's consistent with our comprehensive plan. You can examine that to make sure that these guidelines would be appropriate for our comprehensive plan.
I assume this has all been reviewed by legal counsel as well?
Yes, sir.
Proposal.
During the, yeah. He was, John was.
Was a, was a vote on this unanimous?
All right, anybody have any questions about the vacation rental portion right now? You're going to make a presentation as well over retail businesses?
Sure, this is the, this is the fix and issue that we have currently in our land use ordinance. We have a retail business district identified on our land use map, which is part of the process. And then we, but we don't have any standards in the ordinance itself dealing with retail business land use districts. So this is essentially going to do a text amendment that'll put those standards that were in the land use plan back in 2008, when the change was made to the current plan. This is going to put those standards back in the ordinance. And you can see some of the clarifications that were made is that we eliminated some of the outdated and redundant names such as assembly halls because we went through that process already and changed those to special event facilities. There are also a couple of places like stamp redemption stores that just don't really exist anymore. And telephone and telegraph offices. You know, so we went through and eliminated the things that didn't exist or probably wouldn't be a land use.
Well, Bill still has some green stamps. He was trying to redeem the, I mean, you're not going to take those.
And then, of course, we added the special event facilities as a special use in that district. And then all of the dimensional requirements remain the same as they were in 2000.
Brad, I apologize for putting you on the spot. You may or may not live the anxious. I have a feeling neither you or Colonel Honeycomb, because I've heard the number of previous dinner discussions, that the number of.
Parcels that are known as RB, there's about 140, 146. And they're all basically along highways in the county. On 213 and on 2570.
2215.
Yes.
It's fair to say that, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say that those were very typical kind of commercial retail business locations.
It's fair to say that currently these, they are zoned as such, but there's absolutely no regulations identifying what that zoning would be.
Yes, depending on your perspective, you could interpret it that way. Or you can interpret it that because in zoning, when you don't have a permitted use listed, it's not permitted. So if you don't have anything there, you wouldn't have any uses permitted. So it's just a matter of how somebody, if they took it to court or decided they wanted to appeal any type of administrative or planning board decision on that, how the judge or somebody would, would rule on that.
And based on our current, based on the number, 140 plus, in fact, we don't have a planning zoning person right now. The timeline and the feasibility of looking at each one of these particular properties and rezoning it appropriately as to what the owners and the county deem is appropriate. That's not even feasible right now.
We, we did look at that option and discussed that with the planning board. And, you know, felt like the previous district was sufficient for what the purpose of the uses were. But there are other uses that have, none of them, none of the existing matches or none of the existing uses match exactly with this use. So there's a neighborhood commercial district that has some additional uses. So if somebody wanted one of those uses and their property was zoned RB, they would simply have to get it rezoned to neighborhood business. And there's a commercial district, again, has a lot of the same uses, but it's not, everything is the same. So if they wanted one of those type of uses that were permitted in a commercial district, they'd have to come back and get it rezoned as residential, I mean, excuse me, commercial.
Right. And Donna, you may chime in on this as well. Is, a couple of questions came up, would there be a legal possibility if folks said, well, we don't want to be RB, we want to be residential? That's not something we can just switch at this point. They would, they would have to go through, in essence, an application for rezoning.
Yes. And you, and you also have a consistency statement for this amendment as well.
This is gone before the planning zoning board?
Yeah, the planning, planning board have recommended it to you all.
Is that unanimous as well? And it was reviewed by legal counsel?
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions for Brad on either of these two items? All right, thanks, Brad. At this time, we have scheduled to do another round of public comment. Nobody has signed up for public comment at this time. However, as this is consistent. However, uh, as, as, as this is consistent with our, with our rules, uh, for a, a public hearing such as this, um, if there is anyone that would like to speak to either one of these or both of these proposals, uh, please signify by raising your hand and let us know. Seeing none, I take it, uh, going once? Going twice? All right. Forever hold your peace then, I guess. Thank you very much. So at this point, I would, um, we will close the public comment portion of the, uh, of the, uh, agenda and we've got, I think we need to do a motion since there was nobody that, that spoke. Is that right, Mandy, or do you want a motion? Do you want a motion to close public comment?
Um, I don't think that that's necessary, but I think you do need to open your public hearing potentially.
Okay. Good point. Thank you very much. So we do need to do that officially. So the public hearing, we heard the comments from Brad. Is there a motion to, uh, open a public hearing at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I still move. Say.
Motion by Vice Chairman Garrison, second by Commissioner Wyatt. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? All right. So the public hearing is officially open. And since I did everything out of order there a little bit, I will go ahead and, uh, once again, make it available for the public to, uh, participate in public comment. So is there anyone that would like to speak? Seeing none, we will move on to the discussion portion. Gentlemen. All right. I'm all out of sorts tonight, I guess, so.
Chairman Webber, I'm moved that we closed the public hearing.
Got motion by Vice Chairman Garrison, close public hearing. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hensley. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All right. Now the public comment portion, now the public hearing is officially closed and we will go to forward discussion. Any board members have, uh, desire to discuss either one of these proposals?
I will just say that I appreciate, uh, our boards for looking at these matters and for Brad leading that, uh, we obviously went a little bit of a conundrum in the fact that we had properties zoned, but there was absolutely no ordinance regulation regarding that zoning. So it's good to this is a fix that, uh, that will address it and maybe later on if, uh, the counties that chooses, they can begin the process of going through the hundred and forty and doing away with RB or we can leave it in. That'd be up there, board's recommendation.
I will echo that. We appreciate the board, the zoning planning board taking this pass on and, um, you know, this is a problem. Well, we didn't know it was a problem. It's one of those things you don't know it's a problem until there's a problem. And, um, once we realized that there was an inconsistency there, uh, we wanted to, to get that corrected and the zoning and planning board, uh, did a good job to get that, uh, to get that resolved. And I think what they are proposing here this evening is a good resolution uh, in regards to the retail business, uh, description and, uh, also as far as the, uh, the vacation rentals, the changes to the vacation rentals, I have, um, no issues with those, um, other than, uh, do have, you know, the concern that it would be, that, that the road thing would be a little bit uh, potentially open for abuse would be my only concern, but, uh, I will trust that the, uh, board acts, uh, properly in, in those cases and we'll go from there. Any additional discussion? All right. Hearing none. Uh, time for consideration of adoption. So this time I would entertain a motion that these, uh, we need to do them separately or? Okay. So the first one, I will just do them in the order that they were presented to us. So the first one is the amendments, um, to, to, uh, chapter eight, section six, vacation rentals. I believe all of this actually falls under chapter eight, section six for purposes of discussion. And at this time I would entertain a motion that the amendments to the vacation rentals portion of the land use plan be adopted. As presented by Director Guth on behalf of the zoning planning board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make it much.
Motion by Commissioner Wyatt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chairman Garrison. Any discussion at this time?
Mandy, just to note that's section G under traffic, section K under square footage and, um, access to property.
Thank you for the clarification, sir. All right. Got a motion and a second and no discussion. So we'll move to a vote. All in favor? It is unanimous. Up next, I'd entertain a motion at this time that we, uh, adopt the changes as presented by Director Guth on behalf of the zoning and planning board in regards to the retail business category in the land use plan. And that would, um,
Chapter three.
Yep, that was, that's gonna be, trying to find mine up to here. Bear with me. Chapter three, section six.
RB residential, retail business district three point six point ten. Chairman Webber, I still move that we add this back into the land use ordinance as presented by Brad Guth, Director of Government Services and as recommended by the planning board.
I got a motion by Vice Chairman Garrison. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Wyatt. Any additional discussions this time? Hearing none, move to a vote. All in favor? Very good. Thank you, Brad. Please thank your board on our behalf. We appreciate what they did. All right. Up next is Brad coming back with our developments to, let's see, we've got engineering services request, uh, for the industrial park.
Thank you, Chairman Webber. We do have, um, RFQ for, uh, engineering services for the, uh, industrial park. And I think you have a copy of the request for qualifications, um, in your, in your packet. Um, this is just an opportunity to solicit, uh, design services for the site, um, plan and, uh, for the grading plan and for the stormwater plan for phase one. County Industrial Park. We've earned a county attorney has reviewed these and it's okay. If there's any questions.
Brad, I guess just point of clarity from the economic development board and also from your office that in order to the next phase, should we proceed grant funding for grading of this industrial site would be that we would put out qualifications for, or put out what it is we want done, uh, so that people could bid on it, graders, contractors could bid on. And this report would be necessary to facilitate that. It's fifty thousand dollars, a lot of money, but it's necessary.
Correct. And we don't actually know how much it's gonna cost yet. That's one of the things we'll, we'll actually get the, choose the firm that we were gonna use and then negotiate with them, um, once we have selected a firm. The opinion that we got from the, uh, consulting engineer that we used for the, um, application process did suggest that it would be in the neighborhood of fifty, fifty-five thousand dollars. But we don't know that for sure. We don't know for that for sure.
And we're basically putting an RFQ out to our engineering firm for side to side, call works, slow, all those, uh, stormwater.
Correct.
And the funding for that, uh, has already been allocated in economic development, but.
Yeah, that was in your, um, in my memo to you all. There's sixty thousand dollars there in three different line items that we could use.
Mr. Garrison, what you will have to do is once we since this concerns the balance of the bill. You will have to follow a public hearing before you can actually allocate that money, even though it is in budget. You will not have to do a budget amendment. But we would still have to have a separate hearing. Once Brad's done everything that he's gonna be doing over the next couple of weeks.
All right. Thank you, Donna. So you guys have the, uh, you've had the opportunity to review the RFQ. This time I would entertain a motion to approve that.
Chairman Webber, I still move.
Got motion by Vice Chairman Garrison. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hensley. Any discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote. All in favor of the, of, uh, moving forward with the RFQ, signify by raising your hand. First, our unanimous decision. Thank you very much. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Get that RFQ rolling. Thank you, Brad. All right. On the agenda this evening is Finance Director Kerry Ledford with Budget Amendment Number Four.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
So this amendment records the additional revenue brought in by your library and by, from donations from the friends of the library in the amount of one thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-two cents. Please note the donation of funds to the sheriff's office in the amount of three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. This also records revenues for your health department by way of donations in the ma- way of seven hundred and fifty dollars as well as additional funds in the amount of thirty thousand dollars for the vaccination program. For your approval is the transfer of eleven thousand dollars from the register of deeds automation fund to the general fund for, um, for the annual licensing software used in her department. Please approve the increase to the salary lines in both the emergency nine-one-one departments as well as the animal control department. These are being offset by lap salaries and developmental services. Here too is the recording of additional revenue generated by the quarter cent sales tax in the amount of five, fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and three cents. These amendments are pending your approval.
And the contingency line is blank. Does that mean we didn't add on some crap?
That's correct.
Okay. Making sure. Very good.
Or I guess the sales tax and education tax is always the same. About the quarter cent.
One is where it's coming in, the other's what's going out. This time I entertain a motion. We approve budget amendment number four.
Chairman, I make a motion. We approve.
Got motion by Commissioner Hensley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wyatt. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Thank you, gentlemen. Next you'll find September's financial reports. On top of that next page, you'll see that we are twenty-five percent into our FY twenty-four budget. You'll see that for our general fund, we've received fourteen point five percent of our revenues and our expenses are at nineteen point forty-six. This is somewhat of an average. Um, for comparison, I ran some numbers that, um, bear with me. In two thousand and FY twenty-two, we were at seventeen point eighty-three of our revenues, eleven point six of expense. And FY twenty-one, we were at nineteen point eight percent for revenue, twenty-four for expense. And in FY twenty, we are fourteen at revenue and seventeen point twenty-eight expense. So it's averaging about the same this time of year. So we're below in both.
Thank you. Thank you, Kerry.
Gentlemen.
All right. Up next on the agenda is Colonel Honeycutt. Colonel Rod Honeycutt with our county manager portion of the program.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. Um, you have two handouts at your desk. The first one's about perfect calendar for maintenance. It's just for your information of where we're at by project and with the priority that for, uh, the department of progress, uh, across the board. The second handout is an update in the leases, uh, for the, that we would come back in November, uh, with updated leases. We're on track for that. We have put, um, three of the required in the newspaper on October the fourth, thirty days, uh, that's numbers one, two, and three. And we'll come back on the fourteenth of November for your consideration with those three. Uh, the rest of the leases are within tolerance and not out of not expired with the exception of, of the Walnut Community Foundation. And that one, before I enter into an agreement, recommend entering into a lease, we have an engineer doing an assessment on the structure of the facility. And that's why we left behind. The rest of them are tracking as would always be. I'm certain questions on those two.
The, uh, the engineer that said that they already been contracted?
No, sir.
Okay, so we're still working on that?
Our inspections department, our fire marshal, and our maintenance director will go in first uh, to do a quick review and then we'll determine from there, bring in an engineer assessment.
The concern is whether the building is gonna be viable. Anybody else have any questions?
Uh, number four, the Madison County Fire Grounds. I know we just renewed that for years, but I thought that we talked about going ahead and doing that now too. As far as, you know, putting it in the paper and doing all that. I mean, I discussed that, I remember.
Yes, sir.
Did we do not do that?
We have not done that right now. To do that, you have to have a specific lease order to reason to. Right now we have interest for several parties. So before I put it in the newspaper, I better bring a recommendation to the board on how to put that in the newspaper with which one of those parties. Uh, so I need some time to spend, put that together before I bring it to the company.
So that makes sense.
Any other question? All right, Colonel.
I do, I will transition to seven B of Louisiana package and that is for the courthouse renovation and repairs. Covered a little bit of history. In February, uh, the courthouse committee came in brought a list of items that they believed to be repaired of versus ten and three point eight million dollars that was provided to the county. They recommended five hundred thousand on six topics of renovation and to use the rest of the money uh, in support of designing, building a new courthouse. Uh, specifically, uh, they recommended addition of an emergency E red system, new flooring, interior paint, mold remediation, roof assessment for water mitigation and improved fire and burglar alarm system. Uh, and it was their recommendation to spend no more than five hundred thousand, uh, on those repairs. Uh, since that time, we've had the opportunity to bring in contractors and get quotes. Um, and right now we believe that we will exceed that cost of five hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Oh, correction, thirty-nine thousand dollars over the five hundred thousand. Uh, but to execute that plan, uh, if you look down on page two, there's items in support of renovation. Move and store items out of the current courthouse. Purchase furnishings for the temporary courthouse. Refit offices in this building for it to become the courthouse. Rent office space, put a metal detector in and conduct as best as mitigation as an additional bills of a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. That exceeds the original five hundred thousand dollars. On top of that, uh, we worked with the local court, our maintenance director. And we recommended another hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of repairs. That's the hot water to the second floor, do some office renovations, put some countertops in, some wall removals and put LED fixtures throughout the building. So we're looking at a total of a hundred, correction, eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to complete the renovations. Three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars over what the committee recommended. And I'm requesting to allow us to proceed, uh, in publishing an RFP. I can't tell you that it's gonna be eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars until we get somebody to come back in and say, here's what it's actually gonna cost. We have estimates. I think they're valid estimates, but until we sign contract. I think they're valid estimates, but until we sign contracts, uh, I can't tell you that's going to be the price. Uh, I'm just asking to proceed with the RFP, and then we put a cap on it of eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Gentlemen, some of your questions.
The, uh, asbestos mitigation, was that in the current courthouse or here?
Current courthouse.
Okay. And, um, just so the public and everybody else is informed, uh, this money would still come out of the, this, this money still comes out of the, um, earmark from the state in the three point eight million dollar courthouse?
Yes, sir.
Money.
And we had requested from the state as we submitted our scope of work, and they came back with, uh, one million. What they thought it would cost to there, what we requested. They approved that as a scope of work.
Break us down with the force, Colonel. Uh, movement stores equipment during renovation, seventy thousand. Give me the description of what that means.
The twelve offices in the current courthouse have to be vacated, files moved, files relocated. And you know, you think, you say file, there's years of files. We're talking tractor, trailer truck load of files that have to be moved. Uh, so right now, that's a seventy thousand dollar bill to move, set up temporary storage, and start operations in this building. Uh, it's a significant amount of storage and movement.
And it has to be, because of the sensitive nature of documents, it has to be, uh, very secure.
Security, and we looked at, could we move stuff to the left, and work on the right-hand side of the building, to move stuff to the next floor? There was just, contractors don't want to move, they won't do any of the work. They will take a break, pull off the sides, have them move. Really, the most economic and most efficient way to do it was to vacate the courthouse and start work, um, for ninety days.
Furnishings, fourteen thousand.
That is for this facility, uh, to bring in tables, uh, from twelve workstations, uh, to start operations here.
Retrofiting office space, twenty thousand.
That is for, man, you helped me on that, I'm messing up. Better fit into the office spaces.
Workstations.
Where was the other one I got back with them? Furnishings, fourteen thousand.
I'm assuming the furnishings are for the woodwork that's being done?
I thought it was separate.
A separate pop, okay. There's also work needed to be done to bring this building up to snuff electrically and everything to, to handle all the additional stuff, correct?
There is a seven thousand dollar, uh, electrical bill, uh, to update this building to handle the load. Hang on, I'll find it.
While you're looking, the rent of office space, just correct me if I'm wrong on any of this. The rent of office space is for the, the, uh, accommodations for the DA and all that stuff, correct?
Two office spaces across the street from the current courthouse.
Okay. We've already addressed the asbestos mitigation. And then the metal detector, is that relocating the metal detector from the current courthouse to here? Or is that purchasing a new metal detector for the facility here?
That purchased a new one for here.
Okay.
That was of the status of the one that's currently there, the domination cable.
Okay. So the, the, so the one that we're buying will then be put into full-time use once they go back. And, and that, the, the older one that's now obsolete or non-functional is going to be, now, well, I guess it's not obsolete and non-functional, we can't, otherwise it wouldn't be able to carry on. So this will be to, to upgrade and replace the current one, correct?
Yes. It would be the best of an appropriate manner.
Correct. And, uh, we, the, we, the only other thing we still have to address in that section then is the furnishing scrap.
I might come back to you on the difference between the two.
You've got your maintenance director here, Jase, do you know what that's for?
One.
Now, that was between me and Mark Cody, and I can't remember what Newmarket decides upon any investments.
But here, here's where I'm at with this. So we got three point eight million dollars. We give, we spent sixty-two thousand dollars on the architect firm and put together, the previous commission board put together a committee to go in and see what we want. They come back to us in February and said, it's not worth it. You know, you need a new courthouse. And they put a cap on it at five hundred thousand dollars. And when you go remodeling a hundred-year-old building, you've got to put a cap. You just can't have an open checkbook, do whatever, because I've remodeled before. You, you paint this wall, you'll say, oh, we might as well paint this wall. We do this bathroom, we might as well do this kitchen. And it's a, it's a never-ending thing. I would rather see us take the three million dollars and come up with a plan for a new courthouse, because at the end of the day, that's what we need, is a new courthouse. And if we're not going to go by the recommendations that we spent on this architect firm, then why did we hire him? Then that's sixty-three thousand dollars owed already. Uh, you know. And we've known this for ten months now, nine months now, that we need a new courthouse. And we're no closer today than what's ten months ago, getting a new courthouse. So we've wasted time and time something that we're not going to get back. And I think we need a plan more than we need new paint on walls. That's just my two cents.
You mentioned. Tell, tell me again. Mentioned something, the state, and let the state set one million dollars in.
When we wrote the scope of work, we had estimated that that scope of work, like the Walkman Zoo, engineering firm, contractors come in, that it would be somewhere between eight hundred thousand and a million dollars. The state approved that scope of work for me.
So it could be more than this, even.
Absolutely, yes. I thought it was in the cap, and I can't get to where the committee wanted us to get to with five hundred thousand.
He actually come out with an estimate of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand. They just capped it at five hundred thousand dollars, and their recommendation was to do the absolute bare minimum. But, but put a cap on it at five hundred thousand dollars.
The five items that they requested or recommended. Have a contractor come in, buy it as, is five hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. If you do that five hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars.
You have to do all the stuff.
I gotta do all of those stuff. So I think, and I appreciate the courthouse committee's work, getting into the finer details of what it actually takes to bring AOC in and rerun the wires to this building, uh, and bring it state agencies, it is exceeded anybody's expectation.
So, and ultimately, what we, what we have to do in order to, in order to accomplish what the committee recommended was the estimated actual cost now, which is five thirty-nine, and then the one eighty-six for the items in support of renovation. What's optional at this point is the staff recommended renovations, is how I would categorize that. Would you agree, Colonel?
Yes, sir.
Well, I was on that committee, so I'll take my leak, as I clearly should. We had no expectation of moving out of that courthouse during renovation. It's a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars that we didn't ask the architects about. The architect's estimate was based on the fact that work was going to be done while we were there. Uh, there was a lot of discussion as to, was it possible to have court and do the work? Uh, unfortunately, we did that time, just didn't have the answer to that. So, you know, the five hundred thousand actually was a good, good target. Uh, we were then thirty-nine thousand, so I'm pleased with, uh, that. Of course, we haven't done the bids, some of that work's already being done, uh, correct?
Does that say some mold remediation has been ongoing, Tom?
It does.
You got to stand up, look at me.
We just done, yes.
All right. Uh, I think the only thing that was a surprise to us was, was the cost of constructing stairwell on the outside of the building for emergency exit. That's a hundred thousand dollars that, uh, it's far more than what anybody had estimated, including the architects. The, uh, cost that's, since we are going to have to move out of the courthouse, there's a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars that wasn't included. And also the hundred and twenty thousand dollars for staff recommendations, those weren't included. So I think ultimately, it's up to the board to, to look at the hundred and twenty thousand, and you want to pick through the hundred and eighty-six thousand. The, uh, did it, was there never hot water on the second floor?
Why do they want it?
Well, I don't know, I can't, wash your hands. Yeah, you know, there's a toilet right there, and right beside the toilet's a sink, and I guess they were thinking that maybe it'd be wise to wash your hands in warm water. Which I didn't know, I was at the courthouse yesterday, and we had this discussion, apparently there's never been hot water to wash your hands at the point of the restroom, and then second, third floor, which is a spooky surprise. My hands sanitizer.
You're looking at a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars for interior paint. Is that for ever room in, ever wall in that courthouse?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So the board's recommendation was for new carpet and paint.
The committees.
Better than the committees.
I can tell you, having served on the committee, the idea was, I don't even like the word renovation. You know, we spend a million dollars renovating a building, and then we're going to ask the citizens of Madison County to build a new courthouse. The first question's going to be, why should we build a new courthouse? We just spent a million dollars renovating the old one. And that was a huge concern, uh, with that work group, was that very issue. We used the word, uh, basically of safety assessment triage. What is, what is going to take to make this courthouse safe for five years till we can get a new one built? Uh, and mold, mold remediation was huge on the list. And when you do mold remediation and asbestos issues, then you automatically have to consider that carpet's got to go. Just too much mold in this building, not to, and so that's why the carpet and the paint would be part of that as well. Another problem was, concern is, is when you get a hundred and fifty people upstairs in the courtroom, and there's a fire, everybody's going out one set of steps, and then actually, they're going downstairs and going out one door. So even if they go out, if half of them get scared and run out to the front of the courthouse, the courtroom, and go down those steps, and the other half gets scared and run out to the back of the courthouse and run down those steps, guess where they're all ending up? In the front of the courthouse, in the, in the lobby together, going out the same door, which has a metal detector right in the middle of it. So there's a huge safety concern then. I share with Commissioner Winkle, the problem with it is, is once we've had that discussion, and we've had it publicly, and it's noted in the minutes by our clerk, that it's a huge safety concern, well, we can't, we can't undo that. And so now we have to address the, the issue of, uh, of an emergency egress. All those things were done just to buy us some time, and I'm just going to say it, all the pin people, by saying it. You know, we're putting lipstick on a hog just to get us through safely for five years, so that our staff there are safe, so that their health is not impacted by it, so the people that come and go can, uh, come and go safely should there be an emergency. Everything was done, just a triage to get us through until we get a new courthouse. Unfortunately, some of these other things that the byproduct of it, such as a vacuum, we're going to have to go out to do those things. I'm not happy about it, I'd be the first to tell you, I don't think, I mean, I'm not happy about spending all that money. I'm not happy about spending a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, I, you know, to, to get out of a building. Happy about spending seventy thousand dollars to move and to store all those files, but the reality of it is, there's a lot of files, they will have to be moved, they'll have to be a building, a structure to move them into, it'll have to be secured, so.
Where, where are they going to be moved? That's, I mean, that's locked. That's a vault. Two vaults. Where are they going to move them?
Coming up here to this parking lot in a, here's a facility with videotape that's put on it. Next box. Tractor, trailer, truck, trailers?
Yeah.
And you've got sixty-three thousand dollars here for architect. We spent sixty-three thousand dollars already, right?
Yes, sir.
But then also, didn't we spend like thirteen thousand dollars for the architect design on the, the ramp?
Fire escape?
Yeah.
Fire escape.
I think that was included in the sixty-three thousand.
That was right.
It's a good discussion to have. Important that we have it.
Too much moving, for sure.
Why do they want the LED light fixtures?
This, I think, is a safe economical upgrade.
I feel like I'm in Tom Hanks.
The money bid?
The money bid.
Well, fact of the matter is, that place has been a money bid for thirty-something years now, if not longer. Um, since seventies. Yeah. First reports, actually like sixties, or the seventies, when the first reports came in from the state saying.
It was deficient.
Yeah, this thing's got to go, go do something.
Chairman, I want to get, Commissioner Hensley. I want to get after what you're talking about. Uh, and on the twenty-second, twenty-fourth, we're going to bring you a list of what we think a new courthouse committee on the way forward to design and develop, location, what it looks like, for your recommendation approval. It's not that we're sitting on it, it's just this is one step we got to get before we get there.
Well, in August, uh, Ross come to us and wanted to put the three, three million dollars that was left over in, to be the design.
Soft cost.
Architectural.
For that.
So, and on his sheet, he had five hundred thousand dollars for courthouse construction fees, two hundred thousand dollars for old courthouse architect fees, and a hundred thousand dollars for rent. So you're, that's taken up to eight hundred thousand dollars, but it's leaving us three million dollars. Well, with this new proposal, we're, we're just forty-five thousand dollars less, because that remaining balance has come down to twenty-nine, three million, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand.
With Ross's initial product, we can find it, you know, when the county staff come up with these new numbers, it was the base document we started from.
And at the end of the day, you're still not going to want to hear what I'm going to say. We still don't have estimates, actual quotes for bids for the, this, this is an ass, still don't have actual bids.
We have, we had contracts from government to give us quotes, but we have not entered into a contract.
Correct.
Make a bid, so.
That's, that's why I'm saying you need to put a cap on it. And I'm looking at, I'm going five hundred thousand.
All due respect, five, five hundred thousand ain't going to get it done.
They can get, they can get some else, correct?
Maybe, maybe we need to reassess what actually has to be done, you know? I'd say here, listen to this, and, you know, you can always add, I'm going to piss, I'm going to piss, it's selfish. Wherever we get a new courthouse, we need to save all the money we can for the new courthouse. In July.
What we can do is, be that we put out, we can put out, we can prioritize everything that you've got on your list, but what you have to have there. But you could re, you could, uh, bid out all of these things separately as additions. Addition of the bid, and your contractor can then bid on each separate item. And then when the bids come in, you can prioritize which items that you want within your budget. Keep you from having to re-bid anything else. That would be one, one way of doing RFP, to see what your exact bids are going to be for each additional item.
It's kind of a pressure we were going to do then, painters bid on the paint, carpenters bid on the carpet.
You're going to, since this is one, basically, construction project, you're going to have to bid it out under one RFP, but you're, you're going to have to have a general contract. There's no way around. General contractor to have bid, and he can make arrangements for all of us, you know, he can sub out all of the separate work, but you'll be looking for one bid for the construction and repair portion.
And the cost just went up another twenty percent? By hiring a general contractor?
We brought in flooring, painting, plaster, specialists to get us in the ballpark, that's where this is. The fire escape. Well, Matt will got this number.
I think what Donnie's saying, oh, you'll have to hire, you'll have to hire a general contractor to be over all the kids. What Matt just said, that's another twenty percent maybe right there. Did you just bring, I mean, was that just guys that?
We looked at, Jesse might want to come on up here, so. We looked at a couple of options. One was to have Jesse do it in-house and try to manage it in-house. Versus bringing in a general contractor. After we sat down and looked at the scope of work and what had to be done, a general contractor would go, Jesse, be his go-to man for the county. Do you disagree?
All right. I'm here.
So, we brought in, we considered having you have oversight over all the projects. Versus bringing in a general contractor. And that's our estimate and our recommendation is to bring in a general contractor that you work with, have them oversight of the whole project. It would shut Jesse down, if this is all he was doing, nothing else in the county now. The best way to proceed.
Uh, another thing we got to look at, it's a hundred and something year old building, and when you go to doing renovations, you're going to end up like the stadium at the high school where it turned into, you know, they just kept finding things. So, you know, that three point eight million dollars, that's all said and done, my, it's millions, how many different potential there?
We're a natural disaster, we're not having a courthouse.
And, and I, I, I just think that it's, we need a plan for a new courthouse and because, I mean, you know, we've asked Senator Heiss and Representative Pless, tell them that we need a courthouse, a new courthouse, but we need a plan. We, we, you just don't go to the bank and say, I, I need, need a new car, or I need a house, when you got to have a plan. So I think we need to move forward with a plan and move forward with appointing a committee for this plan.
I think there are two plans. Same to the fix-it-now plan and a fix-it-later plan. Right now, we're in the fix-it-now, and on the twenty-fourth, we'll have, here's our way forward for the long-term plan.
Well, and I will say, as part of the county's leadership team, this discussion, this comes up every three weeks, that we have been given information regarding, uh, a priority list, or hierarchy of how to move forward with attacking the potential of a new justice center, and the twenty, kind of the steps to it, and I appreciate those.
Twenty steps.
Twenty steps, and so, I think Jeremy's right, we definitely need to be moving forward with that now to develop a strategic plan and timelines, and we've had that discussion in the leadership table as well, it's time to just go ahead and put it to the pen and move forward with that still doesn't. Is it fair to say that, now that we did prioritize on, on that working group, uh, the things that were most, uh, critical? That's how we came up with the punch, and there were a lot of other things that we're interested in, but that's how we, we prioritized some of those. If we're going to have to move out of that courthouse, then it's just a matter of picking through and saying what's acceptable, what is acceptable and not.
Well, the, if, if I'm not mistaken, the call to move out of the courthouse was made by Superior Court President Chief Judge.
Judge Gervais.
And at that point, we don't really have a whole lot of options. Um, you know, the, the flip side of it is, is we are literally could be one grumpy judge having a bad day away from being held in contempt before for not doing anything at all with this.
Why do you tell us such a story?
Well, I mean, I kind of thought we had already established that fact. You didn't know we could be held in contempt before? That was discussed, what, two months ago, wasn't it?
Judge Gervais said, in no way, shape, or form will he hold a trial or a court with jackhammers and drills and stuff in the background. He wanted to say a location, he'd come up here, we walk the ground with the gear, uh, where the judge would see it, where the jury would see it, and he approved that, and next we got to bring the sheriff up here this week, uh, for security of the inmates, how to get in, where we hold inmate before they come in the judge, so. It's not, it's, there's a whole lot behind what we're doing. I'd wish it happened, state AOC come in, approves the backbone and the network for secure infrastructure to run it for.
Well, two things, I'm really appreciative of the Department of Insurance and Office, they've had to accommodate us, and I'm very, very appreciative of that, this is, uh, out of all the places, this probably was the cheapest and, and one of the most
Accessible.
Yeah, one of the best locations for us to happen. The second part of that is, is we have used other funding to create for our court here, and we also can dovetail that same use for drug court, and also can utilize it for Board of Commissioner meetings as well. Some of the things, the benefits that, that's a byproduct of it are that in order to have court in this room, they're going to have to have amplification, and they're going to have the judge's bench, and all those things will be beneficial for us having commissioner meetings down the road where the audience can hear what's being said, as well as people that are out on the world wide web, so. We'll have something like, uh, picnic tables for mission meetings, so. There are some benefits, some good things that come out of it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could speak.
Yes, sir.
I have heard through Judge Gervais, that Judge Gervais is ready to shut the courthouse down. He's made that pretty clear, that he wants something done, and I think he said that he wants it done sooner rather than later. And that's been a monumental task that's been laid on the county manager, because there, there are more moving parts to doing that, than, than, and it is expensive, because when you're talking about moving court from a courthouse to another place to hold trials, where votes can be sentenced to go to prison, fifty, sixty years, or even have a, a death penalty, uh, trial, and you're not having to send courthouse where you've got the security and, and, and records are kept safe. That puts the whole justice system at stake, and Judge Gervais is, is a judge who is determined by the book, and to have him come up here and review this and say this would be a suitable place is the first step, and then getting anybody from Raleigh and AOC to come up here and look at it, and then everything, the, the sound system, the security, the records, and all of those things, to, to get things moving and, and get it done as fast as the colonel's done, and then work with the district attorney's office, what officials determine the time when you're going to make that move, and AOC will only let you stay outside of the courthouse for a certain period of time. And, and my understanding is, is correct me, but if I'm wrong, that, that the colonel is coordinated with all of these parties, and has set up a, a schedule of where everybody's planning to be out of that courthouse, start that move on November first, and be out November, December, and January. And I wouldn't want to be any very close to Judge Gervais if we start telling him that that schedule's being changed.
So he, he modified our schedule by two days.
By two days.
He, we've got Thursday and Friday to move out of the courthouse, to establish here, before he goes to court on Monday. Uh, and he's going to walk the ground here Friday night.
This week?
Well. Twenty-eighth, uh, we've got the twenty-fifth, we can start banging and tagging computers, twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh are move dates. Saturday the twenty-eighth, we got to organize it on the thirtieth, they're recording here on that Monday.
And here's what we've got, the minute that they move out, we've got a short period of time to get that work done down at the courthouse.
Correct.
And so, we have got to get this RFP out, because it has to be published in a newspaper for seven days. Get the rebids in on that, or we have to re-bid. And once we get those bids in, then we have to enter into negotiations with the contractors to enter into a contract. Contractors are going to have to get a payment bond and performance bond, because anything over five hundred thousand dollars, we have to have a general contractor to do it. You cannot do this work any other way. Statute requires, anything over thirty thousand dollars has to be performed by a general contractor licensed to do work in the state of North Carolina. Those are the only people you want that's going to be doing work on here. You, you get someone who's not licensed and a general contractor, you can't even enter into a contract. And, and then, you know, hopefully, we can get that to come in within budget. Now, I think what we can do to give us some leeway, Mr. Henson, as to what that amount is going to be, would be that when we issue this RFP, to issue it in pictures, okay? And then that way, when the contractor gives us his bid, he will give us a bid for the cost of each one of these items. And then we can go in there if we need to, in the negotiation part of it, and choose the ones that you really want to. And if you need to keep that down at a low amount, you know, you have the authority to do that at that time. So that, that's one way of getting this thing started, of preserving your right to look at the bids that come in and say, hey, we, we don't want that part. But I think it's imperative that we, I think it's imperative that you take action to, to issue that RFP, because
Went to the timeline.
Yes.
And then, and so your timeline, I'm trying to work with behind the scenes with, um, my clerk, instead of having the meeting on the twenty-fourth, uh, which would be the two, move that meeting to the twenty-sixth, give us a two-day buffer of a time we're putting the RFP out, that gives us fourteen days, uh, to come back on the twenty-sixth and present it to you. At that point, uh, if we have a contractor, I can present a contract, not, you got to go back. We've got two shots, two seven-day windows between now and the twenty-sixth.
The judge's chambers doesn't have hot water either, so. He's not going to lie, he's not having the water, even though he's not having seen your hair.
What's his biggest concern, I mean, is it the painting, is it the floor, the roof?
Well, we had two judges that actually sit on that committee, and the biggest concern was, we're spending the least amount of money as possible so we can invest in the new building, and at the same time to address those critical safety issues. And, you know, the priority was getting people in now the building safely. Uh, there was some issues with the, the roof, the gutter, down spouting as far as structurally, keeping the building sound, and, uh, mold remediation and getting, uh,
Floor.
Do what?
The flooring.
Well, that's all part of it. The second part of that is, is we felt like that with those expenditures, all we're doing is spending money on a building that's going to make it more, uh, marketable, if we ever sell it, or if we decide to restore it to a place of something else, then it's the best not to throw it away.
I mean, but what is it that a judge can just say move that, I mean, it's, obviously you can't do it just because you don't like the color of the walls.
Actually, he kind of can, believe it or not.
Just because he don't like the color of the walls, he can say, let's get out of here.
Well, that's, that's a tad bit extreme, but, I mean, he, a judge can, can, he can, he can issue an order.
Some five hundred dollars, we need to know.
He can issue an order to do pretty much whatever he wants to. He is the, uh.
Well, I will say, a hundred fifteen-year-old building, we are fortunate since the seventies, that the judges have been very accommodating to, uh, allow us, I think the last real directive was that we put someone at the front door. It's a mandate, and it comes from a presiding Superior Court judge, that, that we have security at the front door, we didn't like it. But at the same time, it's probably necessary.
COVID restrictions too. Do what? Like COVID restrictions, like you don't, you don't.
So this, it's happened for history reasons. So this, there was judges in the seventies that said Madison County needed to do something at their courthouse.
The State Administrative Office of Courts, there's a report, and I, I'd have to go back and look, the clerk may be able to refer to it from early seventies, that, uh, addressed deficiencies in our building then, and there's been numerous reports since then, as those were actually presented to us some time ago by some of the people, including the retired Judge Jim Baker.
From that point.
This is bipartisan, Judge Baker, Judge Lee.
But, I mean, from that point, we never really, since the seventies, done anything up until now, really, I mean, we've done it's been very minimal, but you did plan.
What's the old Indian, we've been kicking, kicking the can down the road? And everybody that's part of that, Reese, I was on that work, maybe agreed that that's what's been going on, all the reports, all the, all the surveys, all the arca, uh, arca engineering studies, all the architectural renditions. This board has been tasked with a monumental responsibility of seeing that kind of fruition without overburdening the taxpayers and the.
It's historic, really.
We can only search God's blessing.
You, you don't need a vote tonight, right?
Yeah, we have to vote, yeah, we do.
I would request a vote tonight, so I can begin the RFP process. And the meet the twenty-sixth.
But that's just the.
It's give me a.
Give bids, and if, and the board will have to determine whether they want to enter into a contract on twenty-sixth if we get it done. No money will leave twenty-nine, and it gives me the space and time, set conditions, to get a contract in place.
Chairman Wackel, I move that we authorize county manager to put out a RFP with these particular items, and each item be separated out as such, recommended by our county attorney. Got a motion by Vice Chairman Garrison, is there a second? I'll second that motion. Any discussion?
Once we get the bids, then we can go to cut.
Right. Any additional discussion? And that gives us just a little bit of time to, uh, move a follow-up.
Before we vote, I'd like to say that the colonel's done a good job.
Yeah.
He's spent a lot of time.
I acknowledge.
And I appreciate that, you know, trying to deal with all these different people.
And Jesse stand up, Jesse's done a lot of work, I have done work, if Jesse's done work. I'm blessed to have a good staff.
He's negotiating with the state of North Carolina, with judges and politicians. Congratulations. I agree, Bill.
Just a sidebar, before we go, when I was in the clerk's office, we had the sun, the heat was burnt through the floor, and we could go in and pretty obvious, and you know, you get a good, good, uh, wet down, you know?
The benefit for that was Bill didn't have to pay a dry cleaner price. That's why we're going to bowl now, Bill. So. Alright, we've got, is there any additional discussion? Hearing, uh, this time, a move to a vote, all in favor? Any, that was unanimous, so, very good discussion. Alright, good discussion, guys, appreciate it, I mean, everybody's got concerns about it, but at the end of the day, we gotta do what we gotta do. And, um, that's one of those things where I, I've, I've got obligations, I don't need to be spending any nights in jail over at the stupid courthouse, so. Alright, um, moving on, Colonel?
Personnel, do they have the personnel documents?
Yes.
We shot two, a document filing on personnel, since we last got, there'd been two. Seventeen, uh, two personnel actions, uh, the first is the hiring of the EMO officer, and the second one was hiring of the, uh, property assessor, property appraiser. Uh, we will develop a reporting mechanism where you find this out weekly. Uh, instead of at the next available meeting, uh, meeting, we're in new charter territories, work with us, we'll get a team up soon. Still have a question, that's all I've got tonight.
Uh, does that have both those departments fully staffed now?
We are short one nine-one-one for EM, and that does make the tax department, uh, one-hundred percent.
Good deal.
And a side note, the zoning and planning director position will come down off the website on the twenty-first. Still no application at this time. That was the end date, if we decide to put on there. Alright, you have any further questions?
Um, I think we probably need to consider extending that then, don't we? Or do we want to look at, at re, uh, redesigning that position?
If we redesign the position, benefits back the salary, free recommendation, twenty-sixth.
Very good. Is that all you have for us, Colonel?
That's it, that's enough.
Uh, having no other business come before our board this evening, at this time, sir?
Some impression personnel's going to be in the session.
What's that? You good? Alright, so with no other, no additional business to come before this board this evening, um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn on, uh, before, but do we need to talk about moving the work session now, or can we make that decision at a later time?
We can make it at a later time, but I think, potentially, plan on the twenty-sixth.
Everybody pencil in your calendar for the twenty-sixth?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, alright, so this time, entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Briggs, is there a second?
Hey.
Second by Commissioner Hensley, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, stand adjourned.